Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna call this meeting to order here. Welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting here. And with that being said, can we go ahead and get a roll call to determine a quorum?
Yes, sir. This is a roll call vote for the April tenth, twenty twenty five Little Rock Planning Commission. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Bernard?
Here.
Hart? Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Person?
Here.
Russell?
Present.
Samad? Commissioner Samad? Trimble?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, excellent, great. All right, so now next, we have the commissioners did got a chance to review the minutes and I presume you have. And I would love to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad? Trimble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Perfect, moving right along here to the reading of the consent agenda here. Monty, if you will.
Following his consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty five. First group of items are on to be withdrawn or deferred. Item one, file number S nineteen sixty-three is being deferred to the May eighth agenda. Due to further legal issues, the deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item number three, Z ten thousand one oh seven, is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item number five, Z ten thousand one thirty-two is being deferred to the July tenth, twenty twenty five agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number six, MSP twenty twenty-five zero two is being deferred to the May eighth agenda due to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. And item twelve, Z eighty-one oh three A is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Next are the items on consent approval. Items two and four, number two is twenty sixteen South Van Buren Street. And number four is fifty-nine twenty-four Baseline Road. Those two items are being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item seven, S nineteen ninety-two, Sardis Flats Minor Subdivision Platte, eleven seven hundred Block of Sardis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested minor subdivision platt subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of Agenda Staff Report. Item number eight, S nineteen ninety-three, Berkshire Berkshire Place Commercial, replat of Lot Two, northeast corner of Green Mountain Drive and Rainwood Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number nine, Z ten thousand one thirty-four, Baker Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, forty-four twenty-four Lee Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number ten, Z ten thousand ten A, rezoning from R two and MF twelve to O one, fifty-one twenty-four and fifty-two twenty-four Stagecoach Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested O one rezoning. Item eleven, Z ten thousand one thirty-five, rezoning from R two to R four, fifty-two oh seven Fraser Pike. Staff recommends approval of the requested R four rezoning. Item thirteen, twenty-five twenty-four South Pine Street has been moved to the regular agenda for discussion. And the final item on consent approval is item fourteen, Z ten thousand one forty-three, lots three A and three B, the Divide PCD and Revised Preliminary Platte, northwest corner of Cantra Road and the Divide Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD zoning and revised preliminary platt subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Monty, for the reading. If there's not any comments from any commissioners, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart? Commissioner Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad? Trimble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you, sir. All right, great. So if your item was on the consent approval, you may leave at this particular time. You're more than welcome to stay, but at this particular time, you may leave now. We will give you just a brief moment to depart. If your item was moved to the regular agenda, you would need to stay, and that item was item number two, item number four, and item number thirteen. We will go in numerical order with the item numbers here.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect that Commissioner Samad has joined the meeting.
Thank you, Brad. So we do have Commissioner Samad here for the record. All right, so moving right along here to item number two, Z dash one oh one two three, is the applicant present? Please make your way to the podium, and while you're making your way to the podium, here we have the reading by Monty, but before you read, Monty, I would just say on the action items for today, the applicant or any in opposition of any action item today, you have up to twenty minutes on both sides. So I just wanna make that known, okay?
All right.
So, Monty, if you will.
Item number two, file number Z ten thousand one twenty-three, Gamzoo Duplex Conditional Use Permit located at twenty sixteen South Van Buren Street. The applicant is requesting a CUP to allow for the construction of a duplex structure on this R three zone property. The site contains a seventy-five hundred and fifty square foot vacant lot. The proposed duplex structure will be approximately twenty-two hundred and seventy-five square feet in area or eleven hundred and thirty-eight square feet per unit and one story in height. The exterior of the structure will be vinyl siding. The proposed structure complies with all ordinance required minimum setbacks from property lines. There'll be three concrete paved off-street parking spaces in the front yard area with access from South Van Buren Street. The proposed number of parking spaces complies with ordinance requirements. The design of the parking area may need to be adjusted or revised at the time of building permit to assure that there is adequate maneuvering area. Staff is in support of the requested CUP. The applicant is requesting no variances. Staff believes the request is reasonable and the proposed duplex is appropriate for this location, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the CUP request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Eric James.
All right, Mr. James here. You have a couple of cards in opposition. You're more than welcome to, you know, state your case now, or if you'd like to defer your time. You can let them make their statements and you can come up without losing any time.
Yeah, I'd like to defer my time.
Okay, all right, great. You can just have a seat right here up front.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of cards. The first card is Bobby Huckenhall? Yes. And you can adjust the microphone if you need to, madam.
I think I'm just okay. Okay, my name is Bobby Huckenhall. My address is twenty twelve South Van Buren Street. The place that they apartment duplex that they want to build their house is right next door to me. Now, this is a home area. I think the first apartments that we come that you all would come in contact with would be on University Street and Eighteenth Street. All the other areas Tyler, Van Buren, other era streets, they're all homeowners. And I don't I feel that they should come in and build a duplex, two-family home next to my home. And I'm also speaking for the lady that is at the previous, at the following address. I've been taking care of this vacant lot for almost ten years. No one has given me a dime on taking care of that lot. When I mow my yard, I mow theirs too, for whoever owns it. So I'm saying right now, I do not want a duplex next door to me. I don't know if it's gonna be built up high, or built wide, or built sideways. I don't want nobody look being able to look into inside my windows on my bedroom side and in my kitchen side. So I am definitely against you all building whoever it is trying to build a complex in a residential home area. You would not find a duplex apartment nowhere around, like I say, except on University and Eighteenth Street, and then you got the college to have some apartments up there for them, UAL, UALR. But otherwise, there's no apartments around there. There's no duplex. So why you now you won't come in up into our area and build a doggone duplex? I'm against it one hundred percent, and please take what I'm saying at heart. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card we have is Richard Faulkner, if I'm saying that correctly.
Good evening. My name is Richard Faulkner for the record. I agree one hundred and ten percent, Miss Bobby. She's my neighbor. She's been there forty-seven years, and I'm behind her with probably forty-two. And we're totally against putting duplexes in a single-family home. I just have a few words I wanna express about how we feel about that. There's other members that are not present. I have signatures from them. I think it's about twenty-three of them that are opposing opposition of duplex. If that need to be left for the record, I will. But the property surrounding the lot in question is primary for single-family home. Existing residents are already dissatisfied with high volumes of activities such as noise, traffic, parking, that is on a daily disruption. We feel that rezoning of this property in question will lead to attracting residents of the same caliber that will further disturb and disrupt what peace and harmony that we do now have and enjoy. The rezoning will cause a sudden decrease in property value for homeowners in the area. It is our understanding that the applicant does not live within a close proximity of this land, a lot in which is in question. He will not be, he will not be occupying the property in the proximity of where it's located. This is just another case of someone in practicing in an area which they are only interested in for financial gain. We have not, we have not, no, he will not drive past the desired structure to go to his home. The duplex unit will not be anywhere under his front yard or his backyard. He will not be there to experience what we our surroundings on a daily basis is. His everyday home life will not exist to be impractical and have an impact on the way we live. When a potential homebuyer possibly looking to purchase a property in that area, we feel that additional conditions should be given to the fact. We are not opposed of them, a group, investing in building any single-family home out there. But a duplex next door to our surroundings is a little bit too much for, I think, for our community. For, and I would, we would also request that the applicant be denied this permit based on the fact that we're trying to keep our community small as it is, as structured as it possibly, for we can enjoy our everyday living. Now, and I said that of what Miss Bobby said is true. There's no duplexes in that area. And I could encourage someone, I know you all probably have, came out and looked at this, this little old small lot. It's not big enough to put one duplex on there, not less on, two. So in, 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 in closing, we wish you all just consider our request so we can keep our little harmony that we have going on right there in on Van Buren Street and O four area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, with the applicant, please come back up to the podium. And you've heard from the opposition and some statements, and the floor is yours. Feel free to present at this time.
All right, so my name is Eric James. I'm a general contractor, also a real estate agent. I've been working in the area for about four years now. Just recently, about a year ago, sold a house, twenty-one twenty South Van Buren, which is about three, four houses down from the area. Also, I have a few houses for sale that we have renovated and remodeled that's been sitting for over twenty years that we brought back to build the neighborhood and make it beautiful from Van Buren all the way to Twenty-Eighth Street. Now, we only looking to put one duplex on this, in this neighborhood. I don't think it would bother the neighborhood or devalue the neighborhood. It should bring value to the neighborhood and the parking is, as well. And the argument about it, living in the area, just recently purchased a house on Tyler Street that I'm renovating to move in myself. That's within a four-block ratio from the property that we are planning on building a duplex on. So I plan on, I plan on passing this property every day. I've been passing it every day for the last four years, so my obligation is just to bring back the neighborhood and make it look better. I understand most people in this area is the homeowner. So myself, I'm in the area, I'm a homeowner. I'm not trying to take from anyone or harm anyone or put anyone in the house that would be looking through your kitchen window. I just wanna put someone in the house that wants to live and appreciate a new home. That's what I'm here to plead my case for about this property that we're trying to do on two thousand sixteen South Van Buren Street. So that's my argument.
All right, so thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Before I open the floor up to the commissioners here, I wanna have a question for staff. Did Mr. James, did he follow all of the rules and statutes? And for this area, just wanna confirm that, and as far as the duplex, that's not outside of any scope that you all find of that area?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, Mr. James did all of his notifications correctly for his application. And R three zoning is a zoning that allows duplexes with conditional use permit, unlike R two, which is, which you have to rezone a piece of R two property for a duplex. So a mixture of single-family and duplex in an R three is typically considered appropriate.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I wanna open the floor up to any commissioners for any particular questions, comments, or statements.
I have a question for staff and a, and a comment for the applicant. If, can staff remind the commission, if this lot was R four, which allows duplex by right, what is the minimum square footage requirement for that lot?
R four, I believe, requires a minimum area of seven thousand.
Thank you. And as part of this application for the conditional use, they are asking for no variances whatsoever.
That's correct.
So they are entirely within the zoning ordinance.
All the setbacks, building height, that's correct. The seven thousand square foot you're referring to would come into play if someone is developing a raw piece of property into R four lots, then they would have to have a minimum of seven thousand.
Right, excellent, thank you. And this is just a comment for the applicant, because I'm an architect. When you submit your plans, make sure you're reviewing the building code closely because currently your windows don't meet egress.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
All right, any other questions from any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I saw that Miss Bobby was raising her hand. Miss Bobby, would you be willing to come back up to the dice?
Miss Bobby, I'm sorry about that. Coach here, Commissioner Baxter asked, can you come to the mic? We can't hear you from there. So we'll make sure we have everything on record.
You said, okay, excuse me, you said that you're buying a home within that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but your home is not next door to a duplex, is it? A two-family dwelling house. How, so how are you all gonna build it?
I'm sorry, this is, this is, I'm sorry, this is, we're not here to conduct that, that manner.
I'm sorry, I've been, I've been in the neighborhood for like forty-seven years. I raised my kids, my grandkids, and I raised my great-grandkids and everybody else's kids.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
And I don't want a duplex next door to me. I mean, this is right next door to me. It's not next door to you, not next door to you, and nobody else but me.
Yes, ma'am, no, we understand that.
And so I don't want it.
Right now, we have a, um, a breakdown.
Mr. James, hold on, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on.
My house is being worked up. Excuse me.
Miss, Miss Bobby, I'm sorry.
No, but he's wrong.
No, 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 let me just say this. We, I think Commissioner Baxter was asking to come up and ask her specific questions.
I'ma cool myself.
Please take your seat, Miss Bobby. We understand tensions get high in here.
I know, but let me say one thing, please, to correct him.
No, go ahead and say one thing, but after that, we're gonna have to ask you to take your seat. Thank you.
I will take my seat. Number one is, my house caught a fire.
Ma'am, can you direct it towards us, please?
My house caught a fire December the twenty-fourth. My house is being worked on at present. My electricity, my whole house has to be rewired. And the electricity, electrician finished today, and we got a, a, a permit, permit officer coming out checking the electricity on Monday. And then, once they approve everything, then the construction on the inside will start being built. My house is not condemned, Sarah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. James, you can take back the podium. So if we don't have any other questions, you have a question, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. James, just, I'm just checking. One of the concerns was voiced was multiple-story, but if I'm looking at this, it's a single-story duplex. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, how, how many bedrooms per?
Three-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then who's, who's controlling the monitors? Okay, can you pull back? Okay, fantastic. That's exactly what I wanted to look at. So, Mr. James, just walk me through. It looks like there is, okay, so south, parking's gonna be in the front. There's gonna be four spots, correct?
Correct.
And then the current, and I know Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Russell, I know we don't always agree on things, but one of the reasons I love you being on this commission is your knowledge, and I appreciate you bringing these things to the forefront. So in terms of the setbacks that Commissioner Russell was mentioning, obviously, there's, if you were building a single-family home here, it could be built the same, to the same.
The same, the same width, the same depth, yes, correct.
So the only difference in this duplex is that there's gonna be a centerline wall. Instead of potentially four people living in a single family, it might be six or eight people living in a duplex.
Correct. So it's a three-bedroom, two-bath on both sides for a normal-sized family nowadays?
Or he could build a three-story, five-and-a-half-car garage monstrosity on this lot, and we wouldn't even be here, where fifteen people could live in that house.
So the setup is to look like a regular residential home?
Commissioner Russell, I understand that you're being a little bit dismissive of this, and you'd just an easy approval, but I do understand Miss Bobby's concerns, and I do understand Mr. James's concerns, and if nothing else, we hear you.
Their concerns are with the zoning code. They're not with anything to do with this application.
Commissioner, I'm talking, please.
He is within his rights to build this building.
Commissioner, I, I'm speaking right now. Thank you. All that goes to say it's a one-story structure, correct?
Correct, sir.
I feel that every time, it's always a Solomon cutting the baby, 'cause I hear this, but I think, given the circumstances, I'm gonna be voting yes for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from any other commissioners? If not, I would love to entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation of approval on item Z dash one zero one two three, subject to staff's recommendations and conditions.
Second.
Have a motion to the second, may I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yeah.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. All right, thank you. Thank you, applicant. And let me just say this, not just you, applicant, but also to the in opposition, the neighbors, I should say, that's in that neighborhood. A lot of times, you know, we try to make everybody happy here, you know, in the city, but as this board collectively, it's, it's almost impossible, but what we try to do is have an understanding. You know, hopefully, you can talk to the neighbors. Hopefully, you can talk, you know what I mean? That's what we try to do, go to association meetings, talk to the neighbors beside. A lot of times when we have, you know, different tensions and emotions get high, a lot of times it's reaching out, communicating. So I would definitely encourage you, you know, maybe to communicate with them, talk to them. I know Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Baxter, and other commissioners here made some good recommendations for that. So whether they're small or large, but with that being said, thank you for coming out. And with the, with that being said, we wanna move right along.
Thank you.
To the, thank you, to the next action item here. And that's item number four, and that's Z dash five-three-one-seven dash B. Is the applicant present for that? If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium, and we're gonna provide the reading, Monty, if you will.
Item number four, file number Z fifty-three seventeen B, rezoning from R two to C three, fifty-nine twenty-four Baseline Road. The applicant proposes to rezone this four tenths of an acre at fifty-nine twenty-four Baseline Road from R two Single Family District to C three General Commercial District to recognize the historic and continued use of the existing property as a convenience store with gas pumps. The site contains an existing fifteen hundred square foot convenience store building with a fuel canopy island located along Guyer Springs Road. The property is zone R two and contains the last remaining non-conforming commercial use at the intersection of Baseline and Guyer Springs. Properties in the general, general area are mostly commercial in nature. The request is in the Guyer Springs East Planning District. Land use plan shows commercial, C commercial for the property. The proposed C three zoning will not require land use plan amendment. Staff is supportive of the requested C three. Staff views the request as reasonable. The proposed C three will be consistent with other zonings in the area and continuation of the zoning pattern. The staff believes the proposed C three zoning will have no adverse impact on the general area, and therefore recommends approval of the requested C three rezoning.
Thank you, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Heralda Huda.
All right, great. You have only one card in opposition. You're more than welcome to speak now, or you can defer your time and come back afterwards.
No, I'm good. I can speak now.
Okay.
So the main proposal for my property is like, it's residential zone, and we have a gastration convenience store over there. So we need to do all electrician work outside in a parking lot since my pump broke down and the oil connection are went off. So main purpose of our rezoning is residential to commercial because we need to do. So main purpose of our to rezoning is residential to commercial because we need to do all electrical work. And we got a lot of hazards and issues while it comes to the, you know, commercial things, because people come down and look at it property and they say, we we are certifi- we are certified electricians, so we need proper properties, you know, plan, and then all the permit that it's belongs to the commercial. And it's been like, when we buy the property, we didn't know about it, and now we want to fix it, this thing, so anytime we have to do anything, we can belong to the what property is.
All right, so what I'm gonna have you do, because we do have one card in opposition, I'm gonna have you to take a seat right up front here.
Okay.
And then we may bring you back for any type of questions or comments that the commissioners may have, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have one card in opposition, and that's Mr. Troy Leahy. If you can make your way uh to the podium, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you, I'm Troy Leahy, and I'm Vice President of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. This lady was very nice and coming to our meeting, explaining what they were doing. And we're in sympathy with it. The food trucks are parked on her property, on their property, I'm not showing her further, but but they're serving into the parking lot for the shopping center next door to them. And that's where we're having problem with, it's a trash dump. And I've talked to code and I talked to people and I wanted and her to inform those people that we're gonna clean that up if they can't stop the trash from being thrown on the parking lot, making a trash dump out there. Then we're gonna take action to have those food trucks removed. And that that's the only objection we have, we just want to let everybody know that we're coming.
Gotcha.
Beware.
Yes, sir. Uh let me stand correct, uh Mr. Leahy, you're, are you saying that the applicant is putting trash on?
Her clients, the food truck people that stop there and eat lunch.
Oh, okay, I got you, the customers.
Customers, the customers.
Customers are leaving trash.
The customers leave trash.
I, okay, I got you.
Especially now that the big uh bike owners from Mississippi.
No, I'm clear, I'm clear now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. All right, madam, if you want to come back up to the podium here. And I'm gonna open the floor at this time to any of the commissioners, if you have any questions uh for the applicant. If we do not have any questions.
I'm gonna make one short comment, Mr. Leahy, because obviously you're a fixture here, and and uh even if we don't always agree, we always appreciate your presence and your community involvement. I think the issue about trash is is noted by everyone on this commission and in our city. And I think, you know, proper measures have been taken and will continue to be taken on this property. Regarding the property next to the applicants, of course, that's not within our control, but it's definitely something that we should continue to raise awareness of and look for proactive solutions. And without, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation of approval. The request is C three zoning and item Z dash five-three-one-seven dash B.
Second.
I have a motion in a second on the table, can I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You have a good day, applicant, all right? All right, moving right along here uh to our final action item of today. Item number thirteen, Z dash one oh one three six. If the applicant is present, uh please make your way to the podium. All right, and while the applicant is making his way to the podium, uh Monty, can you please provide the reading?
Item thirteen, file number Z ten thousand one thirty-six. This is the Maze P D R, twenty-five twenty-four South Pine Street. The applicant proposed to rezone this property from R three to P D R to construct a multifamily residential building that will contain four units. The property will be owner-occupied, the three remaining units will be marketed for rent or lease. The site plan includes a townhouse-style multifamily residential building that will contain four units, each being approximately eight hundred and eighty square feet in area. Each unit will have a front porch facing West twenty-sixth, Twenty-Sixth Street and a patio in the rear. Section thirty-six five oh two requires one and a half parking spaces per unit. The parking, or the site plan shows a twenty-three-foot-wide by twenty-five-foot-long driveway that extends from West Twenty-Sixth Street. The development will contain a shared driveway that leads to a garage for each unit. There appears to be ample parking for a second vehicle outside the garage for each unit, and staff feels the parking plan is sufficient to serve the proposed use. And actually, I think um the site plan shows two, that the, what I just read describes one of the driveways, there's there's two driveways coming, uh one for each of the double units. The site plan shows a twenty-six-foot front yard setbacks and seventeen-point-six-foot side setbacks for the development. The two-story residential building will not exceed thirty-five feet in height. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this application. Staff feels the proposed development is an appropriate use for this property and will not be out of character with the existing development pattern in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested P D R zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, Monty, for the reading. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Jimmy Mays.
All right, Mr. Mays here, we have one card in opposition, you're more than welcome to present uh now, or you can defer your time.
I'd like to defer my time.
Okay, great, you can stop at seat and we will call up. Uh we have one card is Beverly Meadows. Smith, yes. Ms. Smith, feel free to let the, you can let the uh
Pardon?
Yes, you can let that.
Thank you. I'm not truly in opposition, but I wanted to speak. Um I I met the prospective builders just yesterday. My mom is ninety-two. So you might say, and I I live in Georgia, so you might say, well, what do you have to say? She's not going to be there that much longer. I don't plan to move back to to that that particular neighborhood. However, for the concern of the neighborhood, we know that there is a lot of disappearing single-family homes. Access to single-family homes is getting smaller and smaller. Uh there's a lot of of uh of uh, I had hoped, because I have been looking at the neighborhood, there are single-family homes being built, and I was really uh hopeful that there's two magnificent lots across from my mom. Uh if they look at the city records, you see that I complain all the time. At least once a month, I try to keep those lots free of debris, even your lot, to keep it cut, because she likes to sit out front and I want her to have a pleasant view. So any debris or anything, I'm complete, always making sure that that area is cleaned. Barring that, uh a lot of homes have been uh re- um redeveloped, but they're still single-family homes. Apartment buildings, duplexes, basically the same reasons the other unfortunate people had with duplexes coming around their home, brings more traffic, more people, more noise, et cetera. It changes the whole whole landscape of the property. It also, in some instances, can devalue the property. I was hoping that that neighborhood could come back, seeing that the developments around were really coming, uh single-family homes coming. I have spoke to them about what they were actually doing. It's a, uh you know, it's a, I think it's a four-unit townhome. Uh you just read the description, it's it's uh upstairs, downstairs, parking. It sounds like a beautiful complex, but yet it's still an apartment building where people, well, the traffic and all that would would pick up. It's not fee simple townhomes, I don't believe, which if someone moved in, they have skin in the game. They have bought and they own their property on a fee simple townhome. Otherwise, it's really a big glorified apartment building. Even though it's gonna be only occupied, there's nothing to keep them there after it's built because it is uh being built as a rental complex. So I just wish that while the city council is considering all of these developments around the city, that you will give more credence to uh single-family homes. If you can afford to build an apartment building, you can afford to put a a reasonable single-family home on the same property. And as I said, there's two magnificent pieces of property on that street. Uh and and truly, there is some homes that need to be removed, and they will be, no doubt, soon because they're barely standing. But there are homes in that street area that are have been redeveloped uh but as rental properties, but yet and still, they are single-family homes and could be sold to someone where a family could come in and the 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 neighborhood could come back. But the more apartment buildings, et cetera, is built along there, the more degradation you'll find in that area. So I would just hope that you would redevelop it into single-family homes if you truly are interested in living on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Mays, if you will, come back up to the podium. Uh feel free to, you heard uh the opposition uh kind of concerns. Feel free to address that and and make any statements you will, the floor is yours.
Yeah, like she previously stated, we met yesterday uh at the lot, and my family went out there. Um like we stated to her, my concerns is we're gonna try to keep it as not be eyesore, more so the natural color of what's surrounding houses and everything of uh of nature. Town homestyle, no she concerned about the the rent of who may come in, but we probably going to do our best, try to properly prep the people that are looking to uh give them a chance to have a some style of a home. Uh three bedrooms, two baths. Uh yes, hopefully we can get to a neutral ground in that case, young lady. Yeah, just hopefully it can, like I said, me being, living there and being able to rent out, I can be hands-on more so about selecting the people that does come there.
All right, so at this particular time, I'm gonna open the floor up to any commissioners to have any questions.
Uh I think you just answered my question, each unit would be three bedroom, two bath.
Correct. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, just to comment to the app, just comment to applicant, um I've heard a couple of things that you're real concerned about the duplexes, but I want to actually compliment you because, you know, I grew up here, but moved away for sixteen years. I have to say, other places I've lived, like bigger cities, what your building would be considered, like what people look for to buy to have single families, I mean, it's very creative solution, you living there adds credence to it. I just want to compliment you on that and say that, you know, hopefully others will follow soon on that, because it makes it, it shows you are putting skin in the game and you're not just, I think this is a way better solution than just somebody buying it up and put like a five-hundred-yard complex in there.
Correct.
So I just want to compliment you on that, because it's probably one of the more creative solutions I've seen in a while to some of these lots and some of these neighborhoods that need more development. And I just want to compliment you on that, and I'm pretty impressed by what I'm seeing on here, so.
Thank you.
No, good point, Commissioner Brown, and just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Brown said, I mean, that's, you know, having a skin in the game, something to that magnitude, it shows not only you're committed uh to this development and project, but you're definitely committed to the neighborhood and the community and needing, you know, more people like this in the community to be able to watch out to the community and have a net village, per se, if you will, so, you know, I'd definitely take my hat off to you with this project. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
I have a clarification question for staff.
Commissioner Russell?
What are we considering the front and rear yard?
Uh in this particular case, the lots are platted, um I'm not seeing a north arrow on that, they're planted a long ways from Pine Street to the alley. So the the front technique, the platted front would be along Pine Street.
Okay, and staff is agreeable to this, considering all of the front doors face Twenty-Sixth Street?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I know corner lots can be different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mays?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mays, quick question for you. Looks like there's some some beautiful trees and obviously, as we all know, being from Little Rock, we've had some pretty bad storms in the past few years knocking down those beauties. Um are you gonna be able to keep those trees on the lot to the extent possible?
I'm gonna try to keep as many as I can that won't block the uh flow of the bill.
Yeah, and then, you know, Ms. Smith, you know, Commissioner Brown and Chairman Vickers, you know, we definitely saluting Mr. Mays for his work, but we definitely hear you as well. And I think it's always, again, just anecdotal, it's such a balance, because, you know, if we had a magic wand, but ultimately, it's up to the developers. And so just know that your your concerns are heard, both by us and the city board, and that's something that we're actively thinking about, is how do we develop, but also maintain the character of the neighborhood? So thank you for making the time to to speak to us.
Great, do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation for approval of the requested P D R zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and the conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F in the staff analysis and item Z dash one zero one three six.
Second.
Take. All right, I have a motion in a second, may I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart? Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Motion approved, thank you, applicant.
Yeah, have a good day.
You have a good day. All right, that was the last action item on the uh regular agenda, and do we have any uh new business? All right. Do we have any community outreach or any statements? Any statements from any commissioners? All right, if not, with that being said, uh this meeting is adjourned.